Good evening, calling to order the Select Board meeting for, this is our regular meeting, not on Tuesday, but on Wednesday, October 29th. And I'm just going to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded by the Needham Channel for the Town's YouTube channel and is being broadcast via Zoom. And is likely being recorded by the Needham Observer and perhaps the Needham Local. If anyone else is recording this meeting or would like to record this meeting, the time to tell us is now. Anyone online? No, okay. So in that case, I believe we have a couple of folks who wanted to come up and make a public comment. I don't see Rob Partridge, perhaps he's online? Okay, great. So, Rob, we're going to bring you over and I'm going to ask you to remember to state your name and address and then we have about three minutes for public comment and I'll just remind everyone that this public comment is for listening. We don't generally respond in the moment to public comments. So, Rob, hi.
Hi. Can you all hear me?
We can, but not really well. Do we have a way to turn up the volume? Let's try again, Rob, can you say hello?
Can you hear me now?
We're working on it. Hang on just one sec.
Okay.
Much better, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm Rob Partridge, 38 Sutton Road in Needham, and I'm a member of the Needham Board of Health. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank the Select Board for their attention to alcohol regulations. But I have a couple of concerns about the proposed update to alcohol regulations which your board is considering today. The first concern is extending the hours of sale from 11:00 PM until midnight. Research has shown that extending the hours of availability of alcohol is associated with higher rates of injury, violence, and impaired driving. I've been an emergency physician for 35 years, so this is more than just numbers for me. When bad things happen from alcohol consumption that harms patients, loved ones, families, and frequently people who haven't even been drinking. And it also uses and stresses police, EMS, and hospital resources. And although it may not be preventable, it is possible to take steps to mitigate the risks of injury and violence from alcohol consumption, which is why I believe that extending the hours of sale from 11:00 PM to midnight is not in the best interests of the residents and community of Needham. My second concern is about holding penalties in abeyance for first-time compliance check failures. If a penalty for a compliance check failure is held in abeyance for up to one year, it's essentially a slap on the wrist to non-compliant vendors and a step back from the progress that was made in the updates to alcohol regulations in 2023 when stricter penalties were put in place to incentivize licensee compliance. We know from the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey that underage Needham residents have access to alcohol and that 10% purchased it themselves with or without a fake ID. Compliance checks are important because they are the main way we can determine if licensees are following proper procedures to prevent underage sales. The Board of Health believes that removal of the abeyance language and stricter penalties for compliance failure will reduce the likelihood of underage sales and protect the health and safety of our younger Needham residents. And finally, I want to say that the Board of Health appreciates working with the Select Board to make sure that town regulations serve the best interests of the residents and community of Needham. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Excellent. And then I know we have another, Charlie Nanda, do you want to come on up? And I'll remind you, hi, I'll remind you as well, let's have intros and addresses and then about three minutes.
Hi, thanks for having me, Select Board. Good evening, I'm Charlie Nanda, I live at 38 Fuller Road.
I'm Kate Linsmire, I live at 7 Stonecrest Drive.
We're both Town Meeting members, I'm P S H and you are?
D.
We're not going to do this vaudeville act.
Yeah, we might, right. But we are here on behalf of the Act for Needham Committee that's building a community auditorium and theater for Pollard. We're a neighbor-led volunteer group that's advocating for a right-sized auditorium. What we would really love to see is a 6th through 8th grade school at Pollard with a 750-seat theater auditorium. So basically, we want every student to have access, both 6th, 7th, and 8th, to an auditorium throughout the day. 6th graders at HIRAC do not currently have an auditorium at their school, so we would like them to have access to one during the day. We also want a space that the community can have that's reliable for evenings and weekends to be able to perform in. You've heard from some of our student advocates, a lot of cases, why they would want a new space for 6th grade through 12th graders, I think have come by this summer. And we recently wrote you a letter prior to the All Boards Summit. We've been tracking public input sessions, we've been to tons of these community meetings. I think the only person who's probably been to more than us is Peter O'Neil over there from the Observer, who actually, if you haven't seen it, the Needham Observer wrote a fabulous article this week. It's called "Pollard Project Offers Needham a Chance to Prioritize Performing Arts." So check it out, it's very comprehensive, lays out all the issues of our spaces and how our current facilities are falling short of our students and our communities' needs. So we've also been listening, we've gone on some listening tours, Kate and I have done coffee talk at the Center of the Heights, we did a booth at their fair, we also went over to the Harvest Fair and was supported by the Needham Community Action Network who endorses our work and gave us their booth for the day. So we really enjoyed meeting with community members and seeing that this performing arts need is definitely spanning the aisle, the theatrical aisle and the aisle of Needham, I think. So our committee aligns also with the Town's Arts and Culture Action Plan, which we run the working group, that the town has it in their website if anyone wants to see it. And Objective 2.3A basically says that it's called to improve access to arts facilities for all and convenes a committee to explore new and upgraded performing arts spaces for the Needham Public Schools and community groups, which is sort of what the Act for Needham Committee has done. So we're actforneedham.com. We tonight just want to respectfully request that the Select Board supports a 750-plus-seat auditorium at the Pollard Project as it moves forward through their project's preferred option. And thank you for your time for championing spaces that help our community and our students learn, perform, connect, and get out of the house.
And then, yeah, and in closing, especially for anyone listening, we have a meeting coming up on November 5th, everyone is welcome to join, learn more, help us get the word out about this and engage with the community further. And you can also visit actforneedham.com. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, those are the two public comments that we were notified in advance about, are there any others? Come on up, Ed.
I live at 17 Laurel Drive, Needham, and I'm Chair of the Needham Board of Health. And I'm just here to support all of the statements that Rob Partridge made and just to emphasize that both the Centers of Disease Control and the World Health Organization support limiting the hours for the sale of alcohol and reducing the availability of alcohol to prevent abuse and below-age drinking. So I just wanted to say that. And again, we also enjoy working with the Select Board, particularly on this issue but on many issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so our next order of business then, we will move on to our 2025 Veterans' Day proclamation, read by our vice chair.
Town of Needham, 2025 Veterans' Day proclamation. Whereas on Veterans' Day, our nation comes together to honor our veterans and commemorate their legacy of service and sacrifice, and whereas Needham residents have answered the call to duty in every war and expedition in our nation's history to ensure the security of our country and its ideals, and whereas returning veterans contribute in important ways to the civic life of our town, and whereas their service performed with a sense of duty and honor reflects great credit upon themselves and upon our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Select Board of the Town of Needham does hereby recognize Tuesday, November 11th, 2025 as Veterans' Day and asks the citizens of the town to join in appropriate observance of those who have served in uniform to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. Signed this 29th day of October, 2025.
Second. Before we go to a vote, I just want to remind everyone that the Town will be having Memorial Day observance on Tuesday, yeah, sorry, Veterans' Day, Veterans' Day observance, Tuesday, November 11th at 11:00 AM at Memorial Park. So please join us, if you can. All right, so any other discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. And the motion passes. Excellent.
I have ten percent agenda.
Oh, that was quick. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. And the motion passes. Okay, so our next order of business is a public hearing, a grant of location for 160 Countryway, and we will be joined by Joanne Callender, our Eversource representative.
Good evening. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very well, thank you. So yes, Eversource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately 10 feet of conduit from pole 344 over 16 onto the private property at 160 Countryway, and that is to provide electric service, underground service to the new home there that will be all-electric with EV charges. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Madam Town Manager, is everything in order?
It is.
Okay, excellent. Any discussion for the board? Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the room or online who wishes to make public comment? I think I see a hand up.
I think there's a hand up.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, no other hands down.
Okay, great. Any comments from anyone in the room? No, okay. Well, in that case, I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately 10 feet of conduit in Countryway.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne.
Have a great evening.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is Eversource Gas Proposed Winter Work, and for that, we welcome everyone up. So we have Karis Lustig, our Director of Public Works, and then from Eversource Gas and Electric, we have a crew, come on up, don't be shy, Peter Bowman, Kyle, and Dylan online, and Kyle online. Okay, super. So.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, I am here today, it seems to be on an annual meeting that I have to discuss winter work that Eversource is proposing to do within the town. This year, it's both electric and gas, and I think I'll start with electric because I think this is a little bit unusual, a more unusual request. We have a request from Eversource, they're currently doing work, as I'm sure anyone who has driven on Webster Street knows, in order to add electric conduit underground on Webster. That conduit is actually going to go all the way down Webster and down Highland, but the portions of Highland that they're doing work on are not currently under the jurisdiction of the town, they're actually under the jurisdiction of Mastod. So for permitting purposes, they are only looking at doing Webster Street in Needham because all permitting related to Highland Ave goes through the state. They have been working very closely with the town to try to make sure that the work that they're doing helps accommodate the utilities that we have within the roadway on Webster Street. It is a relatively tight-developed right-of-way, and so making sure that we have appropriate clearance from our water and sewer so that we can continue to maintain them should we have any issues is important. One thing I will note, we have reached out to the neighbors who are adjacent to this area, but there are one or two blocks of Webster Street where they're going to be going under the sidewalk instead of going under the roadway. This is largely because they couldn't get appropriate clearance underneath our utilities, and in order to get appropriate separation, we needed to use more of the right-of-way, including the sidewalk. Is part of this project, there are three Norway maples that are impacted. Eversource by right is not required to go through a street tree hearing. When they do work, they are empowered to do that under the Department of Public Utilities, but they have committed to the town that they will be replacing those trees with 12 new trees, some of which may be placed along the right-of-way. We will be walking the area with the neighbors who are impacted to see if they either would like to do setback plantings on their own property or if there are appropriate locations to do street trees there. If they don't fit within the right-of-way, if all 12 don't fit within the right-of-way there, they will either go in the nursery or be used for other setback plantings in town.
Karis, I know you have a lot to say, so I don't really want to ruin your flow, but I do recall when trees were taken down at the high school, even though we gave a lot of notice and we put it in the newsletter and so on and so forth, people were still taken unawares. And so I'm wondering, at the time, we talked about maybe putting up a sign, like at the site, that explains or has a QR code so that people can find out what happened to the trees. Can we maybe do something like that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so people can answer their question right away when they have it.
And I just want to remind, the project that they're doing there is for the MWR redundancy project, which Needham is a partner to and a beneficiary of, which will bring enough power to the interchange at 128 to power two robotic tunnel digging machines that will help us get better redundancy, as now Needham currently only has one connection to MWR that is of significant age. But yes, we can certainly improve the communication to the general public as well.
Thanks.
So that is what we have for electric. What I will say, we have been asked and have tentatively agreed to providing two crews at this particular location that would be within close proximity of each other, and Eversource has committed, as you'll see, there is another segment on Highland Ave that is not quite parallel, but pretty much they're in close proximity to each other to coordinate between the gas and electric component to make sure that we're not unnecessarily detouring people on and off either Webster or Highland and then back on to Highland or Webster. So that is part of the conditions. As well, we have additional conditions that we put on all of the utilities who do work off-season. This includes the requirement that they do a curb-to-curb repavement of the road. It also includes that they do not leave any plates on the road on any days that they are doing work, which means everything will be temporarily patched, and that they are responsible for snow clearing in any area where they're doing work. So we are doing, and they're not leaving any equipment on the road, again, in order to make sure that if we have to do snow clearing, we have appropriate space. So those are the conditions that are part of the ability to do work off-season.
Okay, and the work on the sidewalk, will the sidewalk be impacted or are they just going under the sidewalk? Like what's the?
The sidewalk will be impacted and they will restore the sidewalk after they are completed.
Okay.
What standards will the sidewalk be restored to?
So it'll be the town standards and ADA compliance.
All right, driveways for residents have been cut in two, will those be patched up permanently in the spring?
Yes, so when they do the permanent pavement, and I'm not sure if we will, how long we'll wait for trans-sedlement in order to do the permanent pavement, we'll repair all the driveways to make sure they connect appropriately to the street.
Maybe in the newsletter or someplace, we could talk just a little bit about that waiting period and why we do it, because you guys disappear and people are like, they forgot to repave the street, and not understanding that there needs to be some settling time and then you do it. So if we could maybe explain that to residents, I think that would be helpful.
So that's for the electric side. On the gas side, Eversource Gas is a...
Can I just ask one other thing? Will we be notifying the butters of what will happen with more detail and what will be restored at the end?
So I know Eversource has already been charged with notifying the butters about the specific path of construction, impacted trees, impacted sidewalk, and we can certainly ensure that they continue to update the residents. One thing we've had the privilege of, for those of you who have been on the board for longer, our former Highway Superintendent Ryan Hoyland has actually come back for the summer to provide oversight for Eversource, and I actually think it's been a really positive experience, I think a little bit for the utility but primarily for the butters, and he's been very helpful in helping negotiate concerns that the butters have had.
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
And, oh, go ahead.
What's the timeline for this work?
So the work that we're talking about today is simply for the off-cycle work, so our permitting goes from April to November, so this is doing construction December through March.
So like the Webster, for instance, when was that Webster work, is that in the December?
No, that's going to take longer. So the work that's under this condition, which would be outside of our normal street opening permit, will be done in March, but the project is going to be a longer time horizon.
I do have a schedule here, if people want a copy.
Okay, thank you.
And on the sidewalk standards, is that repaved with asphalt or concrete or how?
So outside of business districts, our preference is asphalt. I think there are a lot of challenges with using concrete in a residential context. First and foremost, trees is a concern. So if you have any tree roots, it lifts up an entire panel of concrete, which is much more dangerous from a tripping hazard, whereas if you have tree roots that bust through asphalt, you simply just remove that one little section of asphalt and replace it. Also, there is an issue with the concrete mix in the New England area, and it doesn't react well to salt. So if you have to put down salt, which presumably most people would do on a residential road, it actually corrodes the layer and the concrete spalls and unravels, and they haven't been able to resolve that issue. So outside of business areas, our standard is asphalt.
Is it different than what's currently there?
It's asphalt currently.
Now that you've handed this to us, can you please send a soft copy to Karis so that it can get, two things, one is added to the Select Board's packet, so if members of the public want to find it, especially since I see it has a resource for email updates, and also to the DPW website for the project, and thank you.
Absolutely. We have a public facing website for, just so...
Back to trees for a minute, you want to get going. Other than the trees are cut down, other trees along the right-of-way, where the roots will be cut, either the trench or the sidewalk or whatnot, we probably won't know until spring if they've been damaged, if they don't come back. What do we do in the spring? Can we make an assessment? Do they get cut? Do they get pruned? Do we save them somehow or replant?
Might we be getting advice from our arborist?
So I know Ed has been working with some of the abutting neighbors who have concerns, Ed is also working with Eversource to make sure that they're using the correct techniques that will be the most beneficial for, like air spading as opposed to physically cutting, that should help preserve the tree as best as possible. I also know they're meeting with the arborist who is providing them other insight about the health of the trees that are along that corridor, right? If you have a young tree, it's more likely to bounce back from sort of a minor impairment versus a tree that might already be unhealthy, might already have some complications or be older. So we're working with every single resident on that neighborhood who has reached out.
Thank you.
All right, so the other item that Eversource has requested is to continue its gas main replacement work. We have had, I think, three seasons now of allowing them to do work off-cycle. I will say, I think the relationship between Eversource Gas and the town has been overall very positive, and I think they've been very collaborative with us in how to approach some of our streets, making sure that they're staying ahead of our road repaving schedules, they're not cutting into roads that have been recently paved, and they're addressing issues that we're sort of bringing to them. So in order to help them in their requirements of replacing a certain mileage of gas main on an annual basis, and as well as upgrade the gas main in town to ensure that it's meeting the new safety regulations, we have allowed them to do work off-season. Again, not having a massive snow season, I think, has had a huge advantage for the past three years. If we do have snow, obviously, none of this work will continue and will not continue until the roads not only are clear but are fully clear curb-to-curb and safe to pass. So we don't anticipate there being a conflict between snow removal and this type of work. Again, the work that we've seen in Needham the past seven years, we've never seen construction work of this magnitude from a utility, and it's all directly related to the Department of Public Utilities mandate that they replace, I'm going to say, the high-pressure main in the community. There are three locations that they're looking at addressing this year with, like I said, two crews at two separate locations. One is at the intersection, one starts at the intersection around where the library is present on Highland Ave and goes all the way to May Street. When we have talked to public safety, they do have their own challenges in staffing police details, and so doing some of the work on major roads during off-season has an advantage because there's just less competition for police details, so they have a better chance of meeting the full detail requests that Eversource has. And then the other two projects are on smaller roads, and again, they're trying to get ahead of our pay.
Can I just ask, you've been doing this now for three off-seasons in a row, and this will be the fourth. What's the, how far are you getting? What's the progress report? How much more do we have to do?
Dylan's on the line for the gas, so I'd probably defer that question to him. And then, you know, a lot of what Karis talked about on the electric side is really the project we're doing for the MWR, and, you know, we were before this board, I think, back in December to get the grants of location, so this is just, you know, to really continue that work through the winter, but I think to your question, if we could let Dylan comment, that would be great, we appreciate it.
Yes, hi, everyone. Can I just get a sound check? Can you guys hear me?
If we can.
All right, perfect. All right, yeah, so to answer that question, we have a goal of relaying all the aging and leak-prone gas pipe in Needham by 2034, I believe it is right now. And on average, we're trying to replace approximately three miles per year, so that puts us around 30 miles left to replace in the Town of Needham. I can, Karis, I can double-check that number and I can share that with you and the rest of the folks, but we would be looking to continue on the pace of approximately three miles over the next nine or 10 years. And that's through the entire year, not just talking about the winter season.
I would also mention, and which I didn't earlier, and I think it's been a testament to working collaboratively with Eversource, they don't start construction until after the buses go into the schools and they stop construction when the buses leave. So we do give them a fairly tight window in order to operate for construction as far as, like, it's not a full eight-hour construction day, which I'm sure is also, you know, a limiting factor in what they can accomplish on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you for that information.
Would it be possible to get, you know, sort of a map that shows what gas lines have been replaced, what the next three miles for this upcoming year are, and what the ones are still to go? Just like, it would be useful to have that every year to, for people to have a visual of where we are, how far we've come, where we're going?
I think it would be useful, I think it would be the same as I put, like, a caveat around all of the road repavement work that we have, because I'll say, we meet every single month with Eversource. The work that they want to do this winter, with the exception of Highland, has changed once or twice. When they look at our schedule, they look at what their problem, leaks are, and other, you know, just how to operate around the community and how to deploy their different crews. So I think it would be helpful, but also with a clear understanding that the three miles that they think they're going to do, like, next summer, may not very well be the same three miles that they actually construct.
But if we at least had a view of what they're working on this winter, maybe just tell us what the next chunk is, that would be useful.
Anybody else?
The idea that we're doing this for 10 more years, I think, is new information... The idea that we're doing this for 10 more years, I think, is new information, maybe to all of us right now. And we're, we're trying to sit with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I love maps. I spent way too much time on these things, um, just poring over them. But where we, we're abandoning gas lines, do they stay in place or do you pull them?
So they stick in place, um, but they can be, they, so what they end up doing in the particularly like in the off season, they can't set up services. So they run them parallel. So they have the existing service feeding the house and then they will come back in the spring when people stop heating their homes. And then they'll do the transfers and then they'll abandon the old line. I think we talked before about right of wet and it being congested. And once those old lines are abandoned, they can be demoed. So if you needed to put another utility in that area, you can.
All right. Otherwise it's just a vestige. Okay. And then, um, what's the assessment of risk? I mean, you, we're doing this now for 10 years, but what's your view to try? Are we in danger of like having a house blow up?
No, I don't think there's a concern. I think really a lot of the mandates came in after, um, the, uh, issues in North Andover and Lawrence. And so the utilities, uh, actually mandated to replace a certain amount of miles per year in each one of their districts. My understanding is that none of the utilities are meeting the mark that they are being, um, required to by the Department of Public Utilities. Um, and there has been some, um, concern that some local control could be lost because if they can't meet these goals and it's permitting regulations or other things, um, that are preventing them from moving forward, then they may, DPU may step in and, and try to remove some of our local control capacity, which I think is one of the reasons why we've worked so clearly with ever source to try to achieve the end goal, which at the end of the day is, um, getting the replacements that they're made to do mandated to do done with limited disruption to the town and as quickly as possible.
But like, how many methane leaks do we have now? Do you know, or?
We have a list.
Yeah, we do share a list, uh, generally quarterly, uh, with the community. We share with Gabby, the sustainability director, and we look at that and we, you know, we grade out the leaks, you know, one, two and three. And, and, and ones we obviously jump on right away and repair. And then a two is something that we monitor and, and, and get to as soon as possible. And the threes, we continue to monitor. So, um, you know, like Charis is alluding to, we're just working on the, the, the gas, you know, prone, that are prone to leaks. Working on those and trying to do it in a logical manner with all the other factors of electric work as well as, you know, street work and, and trying to make sure that, you know, getting ahead and keeping ahead of, of the DPW and work, roads that they're going to pave, other construction projects. So, so there's a lot of coordination there, but it's not a risk thing to, to ask your question, but it is really just, uh, you know, get rid of leak prone piping.
Right. No, environmentally, that's critical.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ask, what's the expected life of the new pipes you're putting in?
Dylan, can you comment on that?
I'm, I might have to defer to Kyle. Not sure, Kyle, would you know about that?
Good evening, everyone. This is Kyle Gavoni. I'm a construction supervisor for ever source gas. And most of my work is out in Needham. These pipelines are predicted to last, uh, at least 200 years.
Out with me, you're young, I don't know. I didn't expect that.
That might do it. Right. Do you have more?
That's it.
Okay. So any, any other, any other, uh, commentary from the board? Question?
The underground project on Chestnut, the test pit.
Oh, yeah.
Or do you want to comment on the?
Oh, yeah.
We're just, do you want to jump in on that?
Yes. Yes. So if you look to the back of the first page I gave you, the, it's the underground cable monetization target that has not started. We are doing test pits. Test pits simply confirm what the existing utilities are down there, making sure our surveys match up with what actually is, uh, down there. And so we are actually really close to finishing up. However, we want to be considerate of the moratorium and working hand to hand with even DPW. We're probably looking into, uh, uh, late November, early December to finish those test pits up. Um, and then the actual construction subject to DPU, uh, that would be late 2026, early 2027. So this is, these are just test pits. Again, that it's not actually the, the work, it's the prelude to the work.
And we had a goal of being done on November 15th, or we just want to be open here that that might leak. You know, probably a poor choice of words, but might go a little bit longer than the 15th, but not, not substantially. And it won't be construction, just be the test pits like Ian said.
I did actually have one more question. In, in your plans, you have these giant, uh, concrete manholes all through, but they're, they're larger than what I think of as manholes. Is, is that the size of manholes everywhere or, and we just don't see it from the street?
Right. You're talking about the work on Webster.
Well, it's a six by 10 by eight.
Tool shed.
Yes.
Yeah. This is what I'm asking, like, what's going on in there? What, what is, is that the size that's under all manholes on the street?
Yeah, I don't know historically, but clearly those are the ones we're putting in now. And, and it's really just to bring the power like, uh, Charis said.
So that a person could get down in there and work.
Absolutely.
And I would say it's a little bit different than when the town does water or sewer, because when we're going down, we're laying pipe that then we would go camera, that sort of thing. They're actually going to be pulling wires through this conduit. So they need a lot more space to be able to work within the, their space than for what we would do for just conveying water or sewer.
Okay. So it just, it, this looks like a lot of construction, having the street open first. I mean, that seems like it would take a long time to do and have the street open for a long period of time. I guess it just didn't, didn't seem to me like regular street work where you're there for a couple of days and you're moving on. And we are like, you're going to, you know.
I'm sorry. We are building a system along Webster. So, I mean, the manholes were already in, 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 in a lot of Webster's. We have seven or eight of those that you see on the, on the map already placed.
Some of them are existing.
They're already, no, they're, they're new, but we just installed them. And then when we went to go and work the conduit, that's when we had to work very closely with Charis and, and the water and sewer department to make sure we could fit it where, where it was going. So a lot, a lot of those manholes are already placed in this recent construction. And then when we went to do the conduit, it got a little more complicated where we were placing conduit. Uh, you know, and that's why we're going through the sidewalk in certain places because there's just not enough room in the streets.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
We do list the manholes too. There's, um, seven on Webster, eight approximately on Highland, and then three new on Brian. Those are there in the description.
And I think Charis's point is really a critical one is we're doing the civil work right now. And then ultimately we have to come back and pull the cable. But then you, you, you're not doing real construction, you're popping these manholes, you're going down and you're pulling the cable through. So it's, it's far less disruptive than what's going on.
Okay. All right. Great. Anyone else?
Okay. And just thinking for it, if, um, we haven't done grants free or haven't started grant, have we decided grant? No, we have not started grant. Can we get, are trees coming down there too? Is there?
So we haven't finalized, again, I think it's, we're in the earlier phases of figuring out where the layout is. You don't have that before you because we haven't figured out the layout yet. If we, if they get done with Webster Street faster, uh, and don't redeploy them to Highland and want to go to Grant, I would come back before the board and just provide, um, that pathway. But again, we do, it's the same limitations that we have of like having a developed right of way and figuring out, you know, you might have a 50 foot right of way, but only 30 feet of it is developed and figuring out either it goes within that 30 feet or you might end up disrupting things like telephone poles, um, and trees.
Just wanted to touch on the butter notification since I handle those. We did send one out when the work started on the Needham distribution project. We did provide an update, um, through our constant contact email. So people had the opportunity to sign up. I send those out once we have updates. It was usually weekly and then we had that issue with the sidewalk. So, uh, we sent an update about that. Uh, I'm working with Amy Halsen and we're going to reissue a notification talking about the sidewalk work. So just know that we are committed to informing the butters at every stage.
Right. I appreciate that.
Of course.
That's actually how a butter's heard about it from you. So.
So I was doing my job.
Thank you. As caught unawares.
That's it.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Super. Thank you. All of this.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is multi-layered. It's our town manager's report and we're starting with proposed updates to alcohol regulations.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. This work is before you for the third meeting in a row. So, um, Miles Tucker. Our support services manager presented, and I'll point a privilege that Miles is not here to present this himself because, um, he and his wife welcomed, uh, Emerson Tucker, uh, to the world. So we're thrilled for him and, yeah, he is on leave. But for the, um, proposed regulations in front of you, there are no changes than were originally presented. And I did want to just, um, maybe flag one thing for context, particularly given the, um, concerns by the Board of Health. If it's helpful to look at the PDF, um, page 117 of the red line, I just wanted to make one clarification on the violations in your regulations. Violations are kind of broken into two categories. The first is violations of, um, the select boards regulations itself and of, uh, ABCC regulations and Mass General Law. And the chart for the, the, um, suggested penalties for those violations are on the chart listed on PDF page 117. Compliance checks are a different set of violations. Compliance checks are, um, viewed by the ABCC as educational in nature. And so, um, they are split out in your regulations to reflect that and to reflect, um, council's guidance to the board over the years that because they're educational in nature, um, they're kind of viewed with a different set of penalties. And so the, uh, first violation being held in abeyance is just recommended for the compliance checks failure, not, uh, violations, um, of the regulations itself. In practice, um, I think you all have seen that often when there's a violation at a compliance check failure, there is also a violation of your regulation. So if a scanner is not used during a compliance check failure, there's actually two violations there. And so the board can look at, um, both tables of, uh, penalties when you're reviewing, um, those failures. So I just wanted to put that into context, um, before you take your vote. But happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I, I'd like to just talk about the, the issue of the late close, allowing alcohol purchase until 12. So the, the point of this, as, as far as I understand it, was to, uh, bring us into agreement with our own practice. So we have allowed certain places when they requested to stay open later for one reason or another. And it always sort of makes sense. What is the, you know, but, but hearing the Board of Health's commentary, um, and, and other recommendations, uh, World Health Organization, whatever. It does make me wonder what the, how would it work if we were to, not allow that? I mean, it, it means that we're out of step with our own regulations, which I, I really dislike. So what would the, what could a remedy be? And, and I guess how many establishments have we allowed to stay open past 11? I'm not sure I have a count of those.
Sure. That's in the memo.
So there are 15, uh, establishments, uh, that have a midnight closure and seven currently that are before midnight. Your regulations currently and under the proposed, um, changes, um, have language in there that say, there's kind of a sentence unless otherwise determined by the select board in terms of those hours. So really the board has discretion case by case and, um, you can decide the hours, you know, whether you change kind of what's written in this section to 11:00 PM or have it at 12:00 PM. You couldn't take it case by case as the applications come in. And by, uh, if you were to change, um, the language in the regulations to midnight, there's no change to any existing licensees. Their current license would stay at the hours. That would also be true if you did not make this change and you kept it at 11:00 PM. Current licensees, even those that go to midnight, would retain what you approved when they got their liquor license. So I think the, the reason to change, um, and what, why it was recommended was that the majority of your licensees already hold licenses that go to midnight. And so updating the policy would align it. But in practice, whether you keep it or change it, um, you have discretion on the closing hour.
Okay.
I have a question about that. Would we expect that those seven who currently close before midnight may request to, to extend their hours to midnight?
They could potentially, but, uh, they're, you've already gotten licensees that have requested midnight, even with the language at 11:00 PM. So I assume they, um, just applied for what their preferred hours were at the time, but they certainly could come back and ask for a change of hours.
Can I just ask, I guess of the board, like what, what do we want? Because I, in my mind, the, um, the inconsistency is not preferable. And, and the discretion that we afford, uh, some of these establishments may be contributing to that inconsistency.
Not contributing to inconsistency. Although I have to say that when they, when the licensees have come in, they, you know, they, they do have a reasonable plausible story. Want to stay open till the end of the game, you know, not sending people home at the 11th hour or whatever. There have been a number of different situations.
And similarly with people who have chosen, have, who have elected to close at 11, they also had rationale for their business that said, we just want to close then. We don't want to be open later than that. So it really varied, I think. I, I guess though, to the point of consistency, I, I would rather have a policy that we stick to rather than, and maybe this is what you were getting at, Josh, rather than us exercising discretion. Somehow that just feels more fair. And if, if in fact it really is midnight, why don't we say it's midnight? You know, rather than saying it's 11 and then some people kind of know to ask for something more and other people maybe don't think, I don't know. So I guess I, the consistency to me, I'd rather have the policy say what we actually do. So I think that's the way this has been written.
Yeah.
Is to do that.
I think that what we actually do is evaluate each situation and make sure that it's appropriate. That, that there's a good reason. I mean, that, that seems to be what we have done, although I agree that it's not optimal to have people with different.
Well, I mean, I think it's fine if they're different, but like if, if, if the policy were midnight, but it's the people who have 11, that's because they only wanted 11. Is that what I'm?
I mean, they can still close early if they have 11. Right. 12 o'clock.
So.
Sure.
I mean, I guess I'd rather do what this policy is saying and just make it midnight because that's what in fact it really is. You know, if more often than not, we are making an exception, you know, then let's change it to be what we are actually doing, which I think is what you were saying, Katie. Being mindful that, I mean, I don't think we want to encourage them to stay open later, but it, it doesn't seem that this policy is making any difference at all in what these businesses are actually doing. Is it? Maybe they're, they're either asking for 11 or 12 for their own business reasons. This is kind of a housekeeping thing. I don't know that this is impacting the opening hours. Really?
Right.
Do I have, am I misunderstanding this?
No, I think you're.
No, you're, you're correct in the sense that, um, the policy has been that closing will be at 11:00 PM unless the board decides otherwise. And in the majority of cases, the board has decided otherwise.
And, and Katie, I think you're, you're indicating that if the board were to change to, uh, go to a policy of 11 across everything, that there would also need to be another set of work with ABCC to reset operating hours for everybody?
So in the past, when the hours have changed in your policy, they have not applied retroactively to the existing licenses that you've issued. The hours you already issued have remained. So if you were contemplating kind of rolling back people's hours, I would ask that we, um, kind of hit pause on that, get more information from council.
Okay. Yeah. So I don't know that that was actually understood at the point that the change was made to 11 coming out of the pandemic. I, I guess I would just say, um, you know, because I do think if the reality is that most of the institutions out there do have the hours that they have, right? And I don't think there's been that many that have been approved since.
And I don't think there's been that many that have been approved since the last change, right?
I don't have these.
Somewhere it said three, but I, again, we've read so many different things. I'm not sure how many or which bucket. Yeah. I just think we should have a policy that matches the practice. And if the practice is that they're going to midnight, I think that's what the policy should be clear about. And then they do have the right to set operating hours that are less than because it matches their business operations.
I guess I would say, you know, further to the concerns of the Board of Health, it sounded like the concern was if restaurants were extending their hours. If we were, if the restaurants were today at 11 and basically we were changing our policy and then all the restaurants were going to serve until 12, that this would cause problems, that this could lead to more drinking, more violence, more accidents, more bad things, right? And that, I buy that. I mean, I think that makes sense. However, I'm not sure that that's what this is doing. From what I understand, this policy change would not by itself extend anyone's hours.
But it would enable it or not necessarily.
I mean, it's enabled now.
Yeah.
Right? I don't know that it, that's the thing. I mean, I don't know that it makes a material difference in the actual serving of alcohol in restaurants in Needham.
I think the only material difference is if the board were to make a decision that we want to go back to ABBCC to change everybody's hours.
Yeah.
To 11.
To 11.
But that's, so that's rolling back from where we are.
Correct.
So we're not, I guess, just to be clear, we're not contemplating saying to Needham restaurants, okay, you're all serving till 11, now you can all serve till 12. And we're going to have, that's not what this policy change is doing, which I can understand the concern of that. But from a real world practical matter, it's not actually doing that.
Yeah. Okay. Does anyone, do you have more to say on that particular subject? Because I think there were others within us.
Yeah, no, it's been years since I've closed a bar. And so I did, through the time manager, ask the police department for some data and a look back of two years. What does it look like when they close? And in '25, this year, there's only been one OUI in someone coming out of New Garden. And then there was one other in the '24. And then otherwise, the cases seem to be intoxicated parties are falling asleep in cars or in parking lots. One was taken away in an ambulance, another was in protective custody. So, and that's over the last two years, so.
And they're not necessarily tied to the restaurants, as I recall from.
Yeah, yeah. One, I think there's a case where there was an intoxicated person, but the establishment said that wasn't our customer, that we didn't serve them. I think the takeaway is that I think restaurants are doing a good job tracking their customers and not over-serving. So I've, you know, to go to, to stay at 11 or not to go to 12, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure that makes that change. So I'm sort of okay keeping the policy going to 12 to make it consistent.
Okay, I'm noting that the members of the Board of Health who are here would like to speak, but it's also not a public hearing. So I'm going to ask that, since all of you have made comments, I'm going to ask you to leave it at that so that we can continue in the discussion. The other bit that the Board of Health brought up was the the compliance checks that Katie spoke to earlier. I think one of the things that we did in 2023 was make our penalties a good deal, have a good deal more bite. I think those penalties, especially as you mentioned, as relate to our regulations about scanner use, et cetera, are part of why our violations have been up and down this year. And I feel like we have addressed that a good deal this year. I don't, I would not like to see our penalties reduced, but I understand from the memo that there is case law that sort of talks about what is, you know, generally considered acceptable, and that is the source of the abeyance language. And I wonder if we could hear a little bit more about that? Because I don't want to put you on the spot. Town Council.
While Council is coming up, I just would just say to this point, adding the language about having it, it may so you can always hold any of these violations in abeyance, whether that language is there or not. And this is just to clarify that that is an option available to you and is one that Town Council has advised us to use for first compliance check failures because they're perceived as educational in nature and not a violation of the regulations.
Okay, so is that basically it, that case law says that they're educational?
Yes.
See, that was easy. She did all the work.
Can I ask a question, though, Chris? Case law says they're educational. Maybe part of what's different is the fact that we have also put a penalty in place for not using the scanner, right? And I don't know if that's common with other towns. Part of what I've been thinking about is it effectively doubles the penalty time, which, again, I don't know that that's in common for other towns for a first defense for a compliance check. And it was making me think more about that penalty and whether keeping both in abeyance, I was trying to think back, did keeping both in abeyance make our case with the James harder? Because then we had two days that were actually in abeyance, not one, plus the increased penalty there was a lot of time, right? So do you have any insight about other communities and whether they similarly have put penalties in place for things like scanner use?
I personally do not, but I have colleagues in the office who could answer that question for you. So I'm afraid I can't answer it tonight, but if you would like me to come back with more information, we can certainly do that.
And I think to the policy question you're raising, there have been, at least the recent violations that this board has handled, I think in all instances, if my memory is serving correctly, there have been multiple violations. So a compliance failure in some instances, but then multiple regulations. So we are bringing before the board kind of that matrix of kind of all of the penalties. And part of that decision is kind of, are you stacking them and are they additive? And so I think it is rare that there would be a first defense compliance check failure held in abeyance where you're not also considering the penalties under the other section.
That's what we've seen, I agree.
Right.
And I'm wondering, again, if that is a common practice across towns or not? And I don't have a sense of that, but I've been thinking about that.
Are we able to get that information?
Well, I think other colleagues who practice.
Happy to come back to that at your next meeting.
Yeah. Could we, could we maybe just postpone taking a vote on this?
Yeah, I think that's where we're.
Okay.
So we all have some questions. I mean, generally speaking, I would like to make these changes. I think it makes sense to have our policy and our practice aligned. And, and I, while I appreciate and participated in making our regulations stricter, I do think it behooves us to have some flexibility. We are here to have our licensees behave according to the law, not to put them out of business or, you know, hamper them significantly if we want them to succeed and to change their behavior. The goal is to change their behavior. So I do think that having that flexibility, when we have so many regulations that they have to follow, is really important. So it'd be, it'd be good to see how we stack up.
Great, we can do that.
I would also be interested, Katie and I, I don't know if this is something the chief might be helpful on, but given that I now understand this disparity in different restaurants having different close times and end times, are we aware of individuals in town who actually bar hop to follow closure times? I mean, to what extent do we have some understanding of that phenomenon? I'm just curious. And how does that impact it? And how do the operators with later close times think about that responsibility in the last hour? It may be interesting even to talk to some of the restaurant owners who are in that case.
Right.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to just hold off on this. Fantastic, thank you. All right, so the next thing.
I do want to thank the Board of Health for coming and talking to us because I do think it's led to a more careful conversation and that we continue to have.
Thank you, Mary Ann, and thank you to all of the members of the Board of Health who have showed up. Appreciate it. Okay, so, next thing.
Pollard? Pollard. Just wanted to provide an update of the activity that's been happening since, largely since the last All Boards Summit. So I just have a lot of kind of verbal updates to share and then happy to answer any questions. There was a slide deck in your packet that I just gave a lot of context. I'm not going to go through the slides, but for the public and for you, I think it was a good snapshot of what's coming ahead and some of the key points. So since the All Boards meeting last month, the Permanent Public Building Committee, serving as the School Building Committee, has continued to advance all seven options. We are in the preferred schematic report phase, which is the second half of the feasibility process with the Mass School Building Authority. And because we are in the middle of feasibility, I guess I would articulate that it's the point at which you ask all of the questions and try to like map out all of the answers to the questions. So there are a lot of questions and they are being processed, but I wanted to share first forthcoming information that folks can anticipate and that the design team and our building design and construction staff are actively working on. Those include kind of further exploration of building options on each site. So both Pollard and Defazio, the traffic studies on both sites, stormwater, and not just kind of what are the challenges for stormwater, but what might mitigation look like or what would be necessary? To me, our stormwater requirements, updated cost estimates, and kind of answers to additional questions from the MSBA themselves about process questions that we need clarification on. So I'll share a few more thoughts about that in a bit. Events that we're preparing for in the packet, there are the upcoming community events. There's been a lot of opportunities for engagement, tours at the Pollard, sustainability workshops, a number of forums and workshops. I want to just flag two upcoming events that are particularly include Select Board participation. These are already on your schedules, I hope. But November 17, there's a public hearing at the Pollard at 6:30. And this really is for folks to be able to share any of their thoughts directly with you as the elected board, the school committee as the other primary elected board, and then with the School Building Committee, PPBC. So again, November 17, public hearing. And then on Monday, November 24, we have the second All Boards Summit. And the first summit really was focused on, we were looking at two sites, Pollard and Defazio. Did we want to continue advancing both or just to advance the feasibility for the Pollard site? And the focus for the second All Boards meeting, I think I would summarize is two key questions. The first is, is there clear consensus at that point for one option? And if there's not, do we want additional time within the PSR, this part of the feasibility process, in order to get there? And so just to give you a sense that that is kind of what I expect the discussion to be focused on at that All Boards meeting.
Is there extra time?
I'm sorry, what?
Is there extra time?
Well, so, let me come back to that, yes. And the other thing we're planning for is with, we're advancing all seven options and any option that ends up being the chosen option will require some action of town meeting. Both sites will require zoning amendments. If Defazio is the chosen site, it will require land transfer votes and votes around Article 97 requirements. And so we are kind of mapping out the process for a potential special town meeting in January. And this will show up on board agendas soon, given the kind of legal timelines that we need in order to process zoning changes and get warrants opened and processed for a special town meeting. So just to flag that in November, right around the All Boards meeting, we will have to start the process with the Planning Board discussing the zoning amendments and here at the Select Board, you all opening a warrant. And the other conversation that is underway and will have to continue is really about the land transfer that would be required at the Defazio site. So the school committee has requested to start kind of formal discussions with the Park and Rec Commission. And the Select Board would be able to engage in that working group to discuss what might the details of a land transfer look like. And so that request from the school committee to Park and Rec Commission is currently pending. And that is something that I will keep you apprised on.
Katie, can you, I'm sorry, can you just say again when we would have to start the town meeting process? Just looking at all these dates in November, so I missed.
Right, so at your second November meeting, the Select Board would open the warrant.
And what's the date of that?
That's November 25.
So the day after the All Boards Summit.
I feel like we're going to need more time, like we.
Okay, good to know. I'll say that for right now, good to know.
I mean, I guess this is my concluding thought, which gets at the previous question, which is, I think time is our largest challenge. And, you know, the reality of being in feasibility and advancing both sites and both grade configurations is that you're trying to answer all of the questions that are good and necessary and need to be answered kind of on one timeline. And so the actively gathering the pieces of the puzzle, and I'd say, you know, I think of it as kind of two parallel tracks that we're working on in concert. There's the actual construction engineering track, the traffic and the stormwater and the building design itself. And then there's kind of the governance pieces, the land transfers and the zoning and all of that. We're kind of moving both of those trains forward in parallel together. And it makes it challenging in the sense that at that All Boards meeting, I think we're working as fast as we can to get answers to as many of the questions as we possibly can have for you all as decision makers to have at that point. There's not a lot of time there from when the information will be fully vetted to when we have to kind of pivot to those governance timelines, both under kind of a special town meeting timeframe, but also the MSBA as well. So the question about, you know, do we have more time? I think we are fleshing out kind of all of our lists of questions for the MSBA to fully understand the kind of the domino effect of if we were to extend the preferred schematic report beyond the current timeframe. So right now, the plan is to have the School Building Committee vote in early December, submit it to the MSBA by December 18. That is all to meet timelines that the MSBA then has for their board to process our submission. So the things that we know about extending that timeline, I'd say, one is if we extend our submission to MSBA past December, we then ultimately would not go to a November ballot. We'd be extended into the spring of '27. And.
Or later.
Is that an option? I haven't even known if later is an option.
So the second piece is, that is an outcome that we know that delay would cause. And then we are actively going to be discussing with MSBA kind of the other dominos that may also be impacted because they have strict time requirements throughout their process.
Could there be a special election if we don't make spring?
I, I don't know.
All right.
So this is part of the feasibility process to kind of map out the eventualities here.
And there is also a possibility that we would lose MSBA participation. Or no.
I don't think we are.
I phrase that as a statement. I phrase that as a statement, but it's a question.
Sorry, I do not believe we're at a position right now where I'm worried that we will lose the partnership. I think if we don't have a project funding agreement with the MSBA when we go to the voters, we would have to say that their support is conditional, but that is
Wait, actually, I'm confused about that. So there's a possibility we would go to the voters to vote on a project that we don't yet have MSBA commitment to?
That is a possibility. So if we don't have kind of fully concluded the Article 97 process, the MIPA process, if there is zoning amendments that are still pending, kind of all the site control details, the MSBA board votes on our project as conditional until those things are secured.
I guess I'm not comfortable with that because then we don't know, like what would the voters be voting on? How, what tax increase would they be accepting? We don't know.
So this is the, you know, all of the questions that we're mapping out so that you have kind of full information. Yep.
Am I right though, Katie, that that is a Defazio concern, not a Pollard side concern?
So Article 97 only applies at Defazio, so that's correct. And Article 97 automatically would trigger some level of MIPA review. On our list to confirm though is if there is a possibility that MIPA could be triggered at the Pollard site. So we'll get that answer, but Article 97 is not a factor on the Pollard site.
So it is still an open question if MIPA could be triggered on
I'm gonna, yeah.
Great.
Okay, and so we expect all of this information to come in mid to late November.
I don't think.
Twenty-four.
A lot of it will come mid to late November, yes. And if things are done earlier, traffic might be earlier, we will get it out as it comes. But, you know, we're working fiercely.
Yeah, yeah, no, I
But it would be fair to say that we're not, at least I thought I understood, that we're not expecting the MIPA answer in November or December. Right, that the MIPA review is longer than that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and, and we wouldn't expect to have jurisdictional issues. I guess.
No, but I think we would know by then, we should know by then, what we're entering into. So if there's going to be a land transfer and what parcels that would involve, whether MIPA would be triggered by Pollard potentially, if that's a thing.
We would not have started any of those.
We would at least know like what we have to investigate further. I don't think we would know how long the MIPA review would be. I don't know that that we're ever going to know that.
And we wouldn't enter into the MIPA process until the one chosen site is selected and then we advance into schematic design. So the chair is correct, what we would know in November is kind of what level of MIPA review, if any, applies to each option, an anticipated timeline for, you know, our best guess for how long that review might take. And then if the review is still pending, what does that mean for the town within the MSBA process?
Can I ask about the questions that MSBA had had? You alluded to those about process.
Questions the town has for the MSBA, just about these timeline implications.
Got it, okay. Can I, oh, could I add some more thoughts? So in this discussion, when we had the original school master plan, the idea was in the master plan to do an adren to Pollard. And it wasn't conceived to do like a new building. It's fine to do things differently, but that was the reason for why we had a six through eight school. Because there would be no place to put Mitchell when we were having a, you know, for swing space. Now that we're considering a new building, I'm not passing judgment on that, but considering a new building, it occurs to me that we're going to now have potentially three buildings that are underutilized. Hillside, High Rock as swing space for some port of time, but not, you know, full time. And then the old Pollard building.
The old Pollard building, I think, would be demolished.
All of these things, I just, I think, I want to know what we're getting into and know how we're dealing with these underutilized buildings. If it is demolition, that's an option, but I just wanted us to understand that.
Sure.
And then the second question is, what is the timeline for Mitchell? Because I keep hearing that going six through eight is the least expensive option in the long run. But that's, that's implicit that we're doing Mitchell soon, I think. I don't know what the timeline for Mitchell is. And I guess one of the questions
That's addressed on the map in the
Oh, I know, I've seen that, I've seen that. It has that changed because a lot of things have changed since that master plan. So has that changed at all? And when it comes to costs, I just want to make sure that we, we have enough debt capacity to get to Mitchell.
Yeah. And I would just ask also, I mean, I think we've discussed this before, but it's important, I think, for the project holistically to include the cost for those impacts which are, you know, officially out of scope of a building. So not included in construction costs, but like if there was a land transfer or if the building is built in the backyard of Pollard and we have to clear the building as, as discussed, and then, you know, make fields. I think that those costs need to be incorporated into the site project costs because we're going to need to cover them. I mean, I think that we can't
I agree.
leave that out and evaluate the costs if we don't have the entire picture. And I don't, I don't think it's fair to the community to not, not plan for those costs and then have to go to a town meeting, having just, just done this big project. You know, so I think for the evaluation, it really all needs to be included, even those projects that I think that the PPBC isn't directly responsible for, but we need to evaluate.
So if I'm just trying to just sort of say that
reading back what
in order to compare, in order to make a fair comparison, we need fully loaded costs. Well, I don't know that fully loaded is what you're saying, but it needs to include a complete picture. So if fields are required
Sure.
to be replaced, that's what we're asking to have some
Or if traffic management includes changing the street or something.
That is what I meant by fully loaded.
That is the I just want to understand what that
Not just the cost for the school, the entire cost.
Yeah, so, so there's been a lot of, you know, pictures of the various buildings with cost per square foot. And I just, all I'm saying is, I don't think those are the entire costs of the project. And we need to make sure that roads and fields and whatever all else is included. You know, if there are impacts to DPW or if there are any other impacts, we just need to know about them and evaluate those costs and include those costs so that we can really do apples to apples.
Yeah, the cost of making Park and Rec whole after all the fields.
Yeah.
Included costs, but they're presumed costs.
Presumed costs, yeah, I mean, understood, we're not going to necessarily know in advance, but the best estimate that we can make.
If I could just comment on that to say, this will become more clear when we can outline all of those costs for you. But there are costs, MSBA regulations dictate kind of what costs can be in the project that goes on the ballot, which ones they reimburse versus don't. So we can give you the full view, but just to say that we will also need to talk about kind of what are the allowable things in the ballot question, et cetera. So it'll be a both and, but I just don't want anyone confused by that, that we can't, you know, traffic mitigation costs offsite are not eligible project costs, things like that. But I hear the point that you need a full view.
I mean, I think the ballot language is very important, clearly. But before we get to the ballot language, we need to evaluate this for the health and economic security of the community. And we can't do that without understanding what all of the the total ticket is going to be.
I have a question, but I think Josh has a question too.
Thank you, it was related to what both Kathy and Mary Ann were saying about the total costs. And if they can't be in the override because of MSBA regulations, that means they're going to have to be probably within the levy, which means they're competing with all the other things that we have. So I, in some ways, if it's fields, for instance, that disadvantages those fields because they could get pushed back.
Is that, is that what you said, though? I mean, is the language of the ballot, I mean, this is maybe a question for later, but the total project cost and the reimbursed cost is, is that not something that we can explain?
So this is on the list of information that we will provide. Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
I guess But I, but I do concur that MSBA language is very prescribed about how the project gets described. And my concern is that if there were in fact a presumption that there were another override to make some of these other things happen. I think we need to be thoughtful, frankly, they ought to come together, all right? And people ought to understand what that whole picture is. Because otherwise, I do worry exactly as Josh says, that if it's competing with other things in the levy, you may end up with no fields, depending on what else is there in that particular year. So it's
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess
Lots we need to learn. Say, we can't make a good decision, you know, unless we understand the entire cost to the town of these different options. So we do, you know, need to grapple with that. And they might, it might look different than what we see, you know, here.
Here. Yes. Okay, thank you for that update. All right, and so next we have fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, but consultation, fearless director of finance.
Yes. So I'll kick it off and Dave chime in. But I'm going to quote Dave to say that we started the budget season with staff and we said, Dave said it, it's not bad, but it's not good either. So I think that's kind of our starting point for this budget season. And this is my sixth budget cycle with Needham, but obviously my first is town manager. And just looking forward to a lot of work in the months ahead to get us where we need to be on the budget. And I thought it would be helpful to do a check in and just share kind of some initial thoughts, things Dave and I have been talking quite a bit about in terms of trends that we're monitoring on the cost side and on the revenue side, and then talk a little bit about the timeline and what the board can expect, both on the capital and the operating budget side. And let me start just, we are currently in fiscal year 26 and that largely was a maintenance budget. So meaning we didn't add much in terms of kind of new investments in staff or programs or services. It was largely kind of what was the cost in FY26 to do what we were doing in FY25. And kind of, I think that's the starting point for, I think, how I'm viewing the likelihood of an FY27 budget. But we've asked departments to submit what they need, what they would like, all of us to consider for added services. But with, obviously, we'll be reviewing those within the context of the current economy. So a few thoughts on cost trends and Dave chime in when I miss something. But you are all, are fully aware of our outstanding labor contracts that are coming due. So we will be talking with the police superiors, office, police superiors, again, the police union for, this is for fiscal year 27 contracts, potentially multi-year. The fire contract is up at the end of '26. And VCTIA, which is our union for trades and custodial staff within building maintenance. So those are four contracts that we'll be working on and getting underway in the coming months. We also had funding from annual town meeting to do a classification and compensation study for all non-represented, sorry, non-public safety personnel. So union and non-union. This is where we hire a consultant to take a look at how we are classifying positions, comparing light duties and how we are comparing to our municipal counterparts in terms of pay and we're remaining competitive. So we are procuring that study now and that will be something we'll be working on in the year ahead. Health insurance is a cost that we're monitoring. Obviously, it's in the news almost every day. The town is kind of no different than any other player in the health insurance market. We're a part of a consortium, West Suburban Health Group. We do cooperative purchasing and we have a study underway looking at our participation in that cooperative along with the other alternatives that we would have available to us. So that's to join the group insurance commission or to participate in the Maya's insurance program. And so we're evaluating those options to make sure we're understanding the impacts for us. And the last cost item that we've been discussing, of course, is tariffs. And the deputy town manager's guidance to staff was to not budget any higher, don't make any kind of default across the board assumptions. But if we've heard directly from a vendor that they are including in their pricing any adjustments due to tariffs, then that would be reflected in, in what we see submitted. Let me pause there and see, Dave, anything on, out on costs?
And town manager also explained this to the finance committee as well. And then I thought that was a good roadmap.
Then on the revenue side, obviously, the majority of our revenue comes from property taxes. But the things that, you know, we're watching really around state aid and federal budget, I just want to make note of, we had discussed at one of your earlier meetings that the governor had kind of proactively sought authority to make mid-year budget cuts, including to local aid. The legislature has not taken that request up, but we are kind of just monitoring the discussions at the state level. And much of their discussions are around the impacts to cuts at the federal level would have on the state budget. And so generally for the federal budget, we do have some direct grants that support health and human services, some funds that go to the schools. And so we are actively monitoring all of those. But I think the bigger picture is that just generally volatility at the federal level makes planning hard. That's just the concluding thought there. And so we will continue to be watching and, and understanding the impacts to us locally based on what's happening at the federal level. That was it on the trends side and take questions before I dive into
Ask what projected revenue growth you're using for '27?
I won't be in that position till we finally wrap up the tax recap process, which is, happens through November and comes before the board. First week, the last week in November, the first week in December.
Okay, do you have it for this year, '26?
'26, we were working on an assumption of about 5% overall.
Okay. And then on the capital side, I was just looking at what had, we had plans for May town meeting and including that the quiet zone, whatever placeholder, that was a 4.5 million placeholder. We have $15.6 million in debt financing for various projects. Are those going to be recommended to go forward on schedule? That's Center at the Heights, Cooks Bridge, Public Works Phase Two Design, Water Supply.
Submissions, the deadline for submissions just passed and we're just correlating right now. We don't, as the boards are aware, timing of capital projects, for instance, changes from year to year and specifics, and then specifically to the quiet zone, there are other factors impacting that up and beyond workload. So again, over the next, the next four to six weeks, a lot more will be, in terms of timeline, will be known. But in terms of where we are in total revenue and stuff, our revenue forecast to come out in January with the budget.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. So that's a good segue to kind of what you can expect ahead. Budgets have been submitted from departments, capital and operating. We're starting our meetings with them and meeting all of this month to vet and review those. Finance committee liaisons are also participating in those meetings. And we'll be bringing to the board Um, and um, we'll be bringing to the board um, discussions around priorities that you want to set for the budget and um, also um, at your next meeting, uh, the initial list of the capital requests that were submitted, just to give you a sense of what's come in, but we'll review those kind of um, ongoing at your next few meetings. Ultimately, you'll vote on the capital priorities December sixteenth. Um, so we, um, and then the finance committee really starts robustly their review, um, starting in December. Um, so we'll work towards a final separate uh, release of the capital plan in early January, the town manager, my operating budget that will come to you. Um, it, later in January.
Thank you.
It's actually kind of, feels like we're opening day for baseballs, like just starting soon.
I mean, yeah.
And I look forward to the priorities discussions.
Great.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Are there other things? Katie, town manager's report?
Just to say, I don't want to steal thunder for any board um, discussion, but I just wanted to thank the park and recreation team. Um, they put on the family, uh, the fall family day, including spooky walk, and they had um, just under six hundred kids register for that. Um, and they had a wonderful day weather-wise. You can share your personal experiences being there. Um, but I just wanted to thank them for their hard work and planning on that. Um, and um, just a general public service announcement, um, the town's been notified by residents, um, that people have been receiving fraudulent emails that look like they're from the planning department, basically saying, did you apply for a permit? You owe us some money. Um, unfortunately, scams are getting very sophisticated, and it sometimes can be really challenging to catch something when you see it. Um, so our advice to folks is particularly if you've, have no permits submitted to the planning department, you know, that's your first thought, that we would not at, be asking you for money. Um, but if you're ever in doubt, um, please just call the town, call town hall, call the department, and just ask, you know, I got this email, was this really from you? And we'd be happy to clarify. And we just don't want anybody sending money or wiring money based on a phishing scam, so.
Katie, I wonder if we should think about offering fishing type training, like at the CAF for people?
Interesting.
It just feels like maybe there's a service that the town could provide to help on that.
Right. To avoid it, not to do it.
To avoid it, yes. Not, not to help people create phishing uh, requests. But it seems to me like generally that's the population that doesn't know that that's the time to pick up the phone and call directly and, and just check.
That's great. That's it.
Okay. Um, so the next thing on our agenda is the board discussion of an open meeting law complaint. Mr. Heap, join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, hello. Welcome back.
Thank you. Glad to be here. Um, okay, so on October fourteenth um, of this month, um, the select board received an open meeting law complaint filed by Judith McIntyre. Uh, the complaint concerns the meeting held on October ninth. Uh, and this meeting was held in Memorial Park Fieldhouse, uh, and was held between several town representatives, uh, a representative of the Stephen Palmer Associates and the current residents of the Stephen Palmer Building. Uh, the purpose of this meeting was to directly inform the residents of the Stephen Palmer Building um, of efforts that the town expected to undertake to manage the um, the time between now and when the ground lease with Stephen Palmer Associates expires in May of twenty twenty seven. Um, that meeting again was held on October ninth. Now, attending that meeting on behalf of the town were the town manager, deputy town manager, Kathy, Mary Ann, uh, the director of planning and community development, the town's housing specialist, and two representatives from Housing to Home, um, which is the town's outside consultant uh, engaged to help manage the, the expiration of the lease. Um, so the complaint uh, filed with the board asserts that the meeting was held in violation of the open meeting law because it did not, uh, it was not held um, with prior posted forty-eight hours notice of an agenda. Uh, minutes were not kept, um, and it was not otherwise um, conducted in accordance with the procedures required of an open meeting under the open meeting law. In response to that, um, I've reviewed the complaint, um, and I don't believe that this was violation of the open meeting law. And I don't believe that the meeting itself was subject to the requirements of the open meeting law for several reasons. Uh, first and foremost, um, the meeting was uh, a town manager's meeting. It was arranged for, conducted uh, by the town, principally by the town manager, uh, and uh, town officials and um, elected officials who were selected by the town manager to attend and help facilitate the meeting. Um, again, primarily a town manager meeting, not a, certainly not a select board meeting. Number two, the group that was uh, arranged to participate in the meeting from the town's side uh, was not a subcommittee or other type of public body within the meaning of the open meeting law. It was the attendees on the town side were again selected by the town manager, um, not by the select board or any other public body in town. Uh, and finally, although there were two select board members in attendance, that's less than a quorum. And the open meeting law only applies to the select board, uh, only applies to a quorum of the select board, uh, not to less than a quorum. Um, so for uh, that, those three reasons at least, um, I, in my opinion, this is not a violation of the open meeting law, uh, and I suggest that in accordance with the board's recent prior practice, um, the board authorized me to respond uh, in that manner to the uh, person who filed the complaint. Uh, just procedurally, what the board is required to do is meet to discuss the complaint within fourteen business days after receipt and provide the uh, complainant with a written response and a copy to the attorney general's office. So that's what we've done in the past and what I suggest we do, uh, again, in response to this complaint. Uh, but that's the recommended approach for me, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the complaint or uh, my proposed response.
Sure. Any discussion? Kevin, Kathy?
No, there was a thought about deliberations where it held at the meeting, but that, there were no deliberations, were there?
Uh, the meeting, I believe, was primarily uh, intended to share information directly with the residents of the building about um, what the town was uh, planning to do and what the town was planning to propose to town meeting. Um, which was then scheduled to occur a week, a week or more uh, after the meeting.
The next Monday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Joshua, Kathy, Mary Ann, sorry.
Um, I, I agree that it's not uh, an open meeting law violation for those reasons. I think, uh, in reading the complaints, um, one of the things that struck out at me is that the subject matter should have occurred in open session. I do agree with that. Um, but um, I, I think in general, when we get open meeting law complaints, it's indicative of frustration or people who feel like they're the, that um, they did not have enough information. And I, I sympathize with that because there was no information uh, that, that was publicly available at the time.
Yeah, although I would say that it was because we were in negotiations and the select board hadn't, hadn't had the chance to discuss it in public. Mary Ann?
Well, the select board hadn't discussed it in public, and the goal was to discuss it with the residents actually before it became public, so they would not hear it on the street. From something else. Yeah, so it was an attempt to do the right thing, and of course, it occurred because of the timing of negotiations uh, concluding only just before that. So it was scheduled at the very first possible moment, which happened to be the very last possible moment. Um, both, both were the same, and frankly, the fact that we were coming up on that possible moment, I think, was part of what helped to get negotiations to close fine like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, your, your comment is mistaken. I mean, unfortunately, it is, it was not anyone's wish that everything takes so long so that we can give more notice and have discussions in public. Unfortunately, that's the way it worked out. Um, but as to Mary Ann's point, I mean, that the intention was to share privately with the residents and not in a public meeting that the public could have attended.
I, in, if I, i- in my, to my recollection, part of what the meeting was called to share with residents of the building was um, the arrangement that the town had, had hoped to come to with Stephen Palmer Associates. Uh, and there had to have been an, an agreement in principle with Stephen Palmer Associates before there was anything to share with, with the residents. Um, the, the agreement in principle was reached with Stephen Palmer Associates. Uh, I believe the prior, this meeting was on a Thursday, I believe, I mean, or that agreement was reached the prior Tuesday evening. Um, so there was uh, the, the meeting was held uh, less than forty-eight hours and pretty close to twenty-four hours um, before, after uh, the agreement had reached with, with the Stephen Palmer Associates.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, do we have, does someone want to turn to this motion?
Ah, sure. Madam Chair, I move that the board authorize town council to prepare and submit a response to the open meeting law complaint.
Second. All right, any more discussion? Hold those in favor. Bye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so uh, now we move on to committee reports. So who wants to start? Kevin?
Um, sure. On October twenty first, I went to the Tower Ave neighborhood meeting. General consensus was the project was beneficial, there's appreciation for the DPW's many iterations.
Hang on, just one sec. Let's just wait for the room to quiet.
Good job, our house.
Okay, maybe you want to start from the top?
All right, so on the twenty first, I went to the Tower Ave meeting, the neighborhood meeting, there was general consensus, the project was beneficial. There was appreciation for the DPW's many iterations. There was disappointment from some residents that the project uh, would be delayed until spring, they weren't done uh, soon. Um, there was thought that there, they wish there were sidewalks on Paul Vivier, but that's another project. And so, um, general thought is, go ahead with it.
And could I comment on that?
Yeah.
So, so Kevin and I also uh, attended another meeting earlier in October. And uh, I sent the town manager twenty-six comments from residents at that meeting. Could, would the town manager, would it be okay for you to circulate that when it's like, or so? I think uh, the, the concerns that were raised were not about not doing the project. The, the concerns were sidewalks and crosswalks. As long as we're doing it, can we make it safer than what is proposed?
Yeah, but I, I appreciate that, that a few people did say that. Um, I think there were about the same number of people at each meeting. And definitely there was some concern about the validity of the um, petition that had been sent around. None of the butters had known about it. And um, so I think then there were some people who did want to put sidewalks on Paul Vivier, but that at the last meeting was sort of seen as like, that is another project. And there's a sense that the perfection cannot be the enemy of good. So in conclusion, I think all the, especially the butters and the neighbors are in, in favor of this project, so I hope we do it. And then um, next was envision. Uh, envision mean discuss the select board feedback. And understanding that there are no parklets and survey questions are coming out in mid-January. And um,
Kevin, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, I, I know that I had, had hoped, and I thought I had expressed that hope at the last meeting, that we would uh, let the committee do a walkthrough of those plans, kind of block by block, to be sure that, that everybody understood what was going on in those. And I, a- as far as I can tell, that hasn't happened yet, at least. It's not clear to me that there's an anticipation that that would occur.
No, I want that, yeah. That'd be a good one to walk through, almost block by block.
Block by block.
And understand the, the distinction between the four, the three plans.
Because I, I do still think there's confusion, and I think being able to have that video available for members of the public too, who are similarly confused, would be quite helpful.
Yeah. And I think, ultimately, I think the committee will be giving us a, you know, a list of pros and cons of the options. And from there, we'll have to sort through.
Well, and I think, I'm just using as a point of comparison, I know other board members have seen it as well. We all had the opportunity to do a block by block through the Highland Avenue project.
Yeah.
But I found that really helpful, and it, it gave me, in that instance, the opportunity to engage about pros and cons. And again, I think for the committee to have that opportunity to engage about pros and cons may uh, help everybody to think about this
Yeah.
from a little bit different perspective.
Yeah, I think that's, that may, that's on the list for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
That's all I got.
I went on a little tangent in my head. Um, that's all you've got. Okay. Kathy?
I do not have updates.
Okay. Uh, Josh?
No, I do not have updates.
Mary Ann?
Large House, uh, met Monday, thinking Monday this week.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they are at a stage of having discussions about, they spent time on Monday, again, looking at the fiscal impact of different options and trying to understand what that would look like based on reductions, potential reductions in uh, the total size of the house that could be built on different sized lots. And then starting to have a discussion about how could they focus on considering certain size reductions? Were there any size reductions that could be eliminated as too much or too little to be worthy of consideration and further discussion? I'm not completely sure that we were able to eliminate two, the top and the bottom. I'm not sure where that landed. Um, I think we eliminated the top. I'm not clear if we eliminated the bottom yet. But, but at any rate, the, the goal is to be narrowing the options so that they can focus discussion, or we can focus discussion on what some of these reductions might mean and what they effectively might mean to a neighborhood. Um, in, in preparation for talking to the planning board and for a public hearing on November eighteenth. Um, I believe.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I would say all of that obviously is correct, but also that um, the large house committee will be presenting to the planning board on the fourth, which I think if people are interested and want to get ahead of the public forum, might be a really good chance to see what the fiscal impact is looking like and, and sort of what the parameters are that the committee is considering. Um, but then again, there will be a large house review open public forum in Powers Hall on the eighteenth.
And we should probably be clear, when we're talking about fiscal impact, um, the reason there's a fiscal impact is because the town, if smaller houses are built, would experience, at least briefly, uh, some reduction in new growth. So it's really just the new growth amount because the building is smaller than it used to be. I mean, that's really kind of where it comes from. So a different sized property can be built. Therefore, the underlying lot has a different value. It all adds up to being something different. And the finance committee was curious about what that potential loss of new growth might be.
Okay, well, um, I will just uh, just take a few minutes then to um, congratulate uh, our town manager on her first solo special town meeting, so. Um, in addition to that evening, uh, the select board went to the MWRA rock core, core rock sample facility on Friday. We had a fascinating little field trip to, to understand the work that the MWRA is doing in preparation for the massive tunnel project. Saw really long pieces of rock. It was, it was much more official and scientific than I'm making it sound. Um, saw the, the, the really detailed map that they're building of the underlying um, ground conditions. ground conditions all along the path of the the proposed tunnel, which will start in needum in both directions. So it's going to be a huge project that is, you know, very much in in the public good, I think. And they were kind enough to sort of give us a lot more detail about how how they are conducting this research and then what happens next. And so that was fascinating, and we appreciate them hosting a public meeting. The spooky walk was mentioned by the town manager. Kevin and I were at the spooky walk all day, and we were both dressed up, and we were awesome. Kevin was wearing armor as a stormtrooper, very exciting costume and really got just the, I thought my costume was really good, but I was standing next to a stormtrooper and so didn't get as much appreciation as I might have.
The costume was great. It was.
I do want to call everyone's attention to, we have a week of upcoming public forums, and it's not next week, but I, it just, I feel like everyone should know. So I'm going to say it at every meeting, at every meeting. On 11/17, that's on Monday, we have a big hearing on, a big public forum on the Pollard Project. The next night, we have a big public hearing on the large house review project. And the night after that, we have a large public forum, all of these in Powers Hall, on the, by the Tree Preservation Planning Committee on the proposed tree bylaw and other events that the that the tree committee is coming up with. It's a long week. It's a lot of public forums in one week. And unfortunately, that's just sometimes the way it shakes out. But with advance notice, hopefully, folks will be able to attend those forums that they feel most strongly about. And then one more time, I'm just going to say that the town's Veterans Day observance is 11/11 at 11 at Memorial Park. So come and join us. And that's it. Anybody have anything else?
You can join.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.